Hello and welcome to your urban connection. This is the channel that is often imitated, but is never duplicated. On this channel, I want to remind you, you're in the sugar-free zone when you watch this channel, which means that hey, I don't sugarcoat anything for anybody, regardless of age, gender, sex, nor race. Today, I tell you, I'm very happy to have a candidate for Wichita City Council District One, and I would urge you that this show, I think, will convince you that you are watching the most prepared candidate ever to run for District One City Council. I stand by that. Some don't like it, that's their problem, not mine. I'm a native Wichita, I've been here all my life. I've seen every candidate that has run for District One since we had district elections. And my guest today has more preparedness and more qualifications than any candidate ever to run for District One. Welcome to my show today, my special guest, and the hardest working woman in Wichita. From a volunteer's perspective, in particular for District One, Ms. Lawanda DeShazer. Welcome to the show, Ms. DeShazer.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Barfield. I'm so excited to be here.
I'm glad to have you. And let's get right started here. Lawanda, yesterday you finished the last of several forums, candidate forums, that was held at St. Paul AME Church. And after watching that performance that you gave yesterday, I am more convinced now than ever that you are the right candidate.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Prepared to occupy that seat. So let's talk a little bit about the forum, let's talk about a bit about you, why you're running, and what your accomplishments and achievements have been from the time that you first entered the arena as a public servant. Not a politician, notice I didn't say politician.
Right, right.
Okay? So you served for 20 years with the Cedric County Fire Department. You were a budget analyst, is that correct?
Yeah, what budget manager.
Budget manager, okay. Alright, what then, let me ask you, what, you, you served for 20 years with the Cedric County Fire Department, you retired in 2005, is that right?
2019.
2019, okay. Now, so what encouraged you then to come and volunteer your time on a regular basis with the amount of dedication, commitment, and passion that you've shown over the last 20 years?
You know, Mr. Barfield, I, I tell everybody, I lost my husband to cancer, and we'll never know just because of the 29th Street contamination, we'll never know. But I found myself in a, in a place, you know, and I didn't have, I needed some direction, I needed something to do, I needed to not focus on myself. Now, I had the Bulldogs, and that was already my love. And, and having, needing a venue to throw myself into, it was the perfect venue. The Wichita Golden Bulldogs, it was perfect.
Okay. And for you, now of course, we're talking about football.
Right.
Female, at that time, females really were not that into the football scene, am I correct?
You are correct, and as a matter of fact, I broke history. I was the first female on the board of the Golden Bulldogs. Because of the work that I actually did with the organization. It started off, yeah, just football, right? But it progressed, that I ended up being there. I gave myself the title budget manager with them as well. It, it grew, you know, working with families, seeing that. It was a real hardship just to pay football fees. And so you know if there's a hardship to pay football fees, there's other things going on. And so I started learning, where are the resources? Where are the resources? How do I connect the people? And so that's what got it all started.
Okay, and did you have family members that were involved with the Bulldogs at that time?
Uh, my family has been involved with the Bulldogs for a really long time. And at the same time, we also have a wrestling program, Team of Heart Knox. So on both spectrums, I was able to work with families.
Okay, okay. Now, uh, so you were there with them, and you also helped raise funds for the Football League, the little Junior Football League, right?
Correct. And, and Mr. Barfield, that may have been the hardest work I've ever done. Um, bake sales, car washes, raffles, just doing whatever I could do. Um, writing grants, looking for sponsors, do, actually doing all of those different aspects. I touched so many different, um, resources, right? So many different people and organizations that it just built up my knowledge base of who to go to, where to turn, how do I get help for these families?
Okay, okay. Well, that sounds like work to me.
It was work.
And, uh, and so then, you spent how many years with, with the Bulldogs?
Still with them.
You're still with them?
I'm still, yeah, in, in a different facet, but I'm still with them. So my nonprofit, I also have a nonprofit called Communities in Action. And so when we lost our fearless leader, Mr. Theo Cribbs, the best, um, our, our organization took a little shift. But this year, we're back in full stride. I got the name trademarked, Wichita Golden Bulldogs. We own the name. And we're back to black and gold, and, and we're making it happen once again.
Okay. So now that you've gotten a little time invested, and you volunteered, and, and put most of yourself, if not all of yourself, into the Football League, uh, what then was your next step?
I think, so while I was still with Cedric County, all of this was going on. So I was working full-time, raising my kids, and still doing the volunteer work. And one of the things that I did with Cedric County, I was a lone executive officer for United Way. So that meant for like nine months, I was loaned to that organization. And so again, I was put in a position to learn about even more resources, uh, how to get more help. And I was even, you know, um, expected to go out and talk to different organizations to help raise money for United Way. And so again, I was making connections around the city. And so doing that in the background, right? Um, I joined, and don't ask me the year, but joining the NAACP was also another move in community work. Um, I was first on the executive board, but then when I segue over to the youth council advisory person, put me in a whole nother arena.
And, and you've been doing that now for how long? Because I think you still at that, right?
Um, well, I had to step down due to bylaws. While I'm running for city council, I had to step down. So I've recently stepped down from that position.
But how many years were you involved in that?
That had to be at least, at least, uh, nine years.
Okay, okay. So you've got now to the point where after 20 years, that's in your DNA, being a public servant, volunteering for your community because of the fact that you realize that this is your hometown.
Exactly.
Born here, you were raised here, you raised children here, you were educated here, you own a home here, you pay taxes here. This is your home, and all of this happened while you were living in District One, is that not correct?
Correct, District One. Um, well, I live over in Northeast neighborhood, Northeast Miller neighborhood. No, 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 what is it, what? Look, I just got mixed up, Northeast Heights neighborhood.
Yeah.
And that's where I've been, my, you know, my kids went to school down the street. So yeah, I've been here while I was doing all of that work, yes.
Okay. So, you know, you know, some people don't like it when I say that you are the best-prepared candidate. But let's face the things, do the math. Do the math. Now, and like I said, I've known every candidate that's ever run. So let's talk about it.
Okay.
No other candidate that has ever announced a run can match your 20-plus years of community service. None. None. So I'm, I'm factual, I've got a memory like an elephant. I can go back. The first District One representative we had was Rip Gooch. Rip Gooch didn't have 20 years of public service in his background. The guy he ran against was a professor at WSU, whose name was John Gaston. John Gaston didn't have 20 years. The next one was, uh, Johnson. What's her, what's her first name?
Teresa.
Teresa Johnson, okay? Teresa Johnson worked at Beach, she didn't have 20 years. The next one was George Rogers. Professor WSU. He didn't have 20 years. Okay? And we can go all the way up the ladder. So I'm totally comfortable and I'm totally accurate when I say that you are the most prepared candidate for that seat than any candidate that has ever run.
And you know, I'm glad, and I'm glad you quantified it. So, so the naysayers, you know, you built your reputation on your word, and I know you do your research, and so I'm glad you quantified it in case anybody didn't understand what you were saying.
Well, I offered them a challenge. If I'm wrong, prove me wrong. Oh, you have to split up a hundred dollars, okay? Let's go at it. And they'll challenge me, okay? So they can say, that's what I tell you, don't pay any attention to what they say. Watch what they do, okay? So you, let's go to another thing. Now, here's something that I think is very important to put out there. 20-plus years of community service plus 20 years with the Cedric County Fire Department, that adds up to 40-plus years. And there's not one hit, not one scintilla of any scandal on your name anywhere. Am I correct?
You are correct, sir.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, now, so you know, people have got to understand that anybody can come on here, anybody can run for office, they can have surrogates that tell stuff about what they're going to do, what their candidate is going to do. But have you noticed they never tell you what they have done?
Right, right. I, I've noticed, I've noticed, you know, Mr. Barfield, you're a businessman. I've raised a flag on several issues. And in any thriving community, you have to have a school, and you gotta have banks, right? When a bank closed in the heart of our district, and I raised the flag, people couldn't look at what we were losing. They were trying to look at what we're going to gain, and they couldn't separate the issues. And I think again, it comes back to maturity. You have to have banks in your communities in order for them to thrive.
Well, you know, let me say, you know, when you start to talking about banking, it's going right up my alley.
I know.
In the first place, a federally charged bank is supposed to have charges in every community they serve. That includes local parents. So that's why the bank was put there in the first place, they were living up to that obligation. The same way where the bank, uh, used to be banked for it 21st Hillside. That's why it was there, because the government regulations require you to have those mains there. But while we're on the subject of banks, I have to say this.
Okay.
Redlining is rearing its ugly head once again in the city of Wichita. And nobody is talking about it. Where in the heck are the so-called leaders in Wichita? And the wannabe leaders? There's a definite problem when we have the oldest black church in the city of Wichita has been denied three times by three different banking institutions, and nobody said a word. Not the Ministerial League, not the members of the church, not the NAACP, okay? Nobody. So basically, all these people, they want to call themselves leaders, are nothing more than enablers. And the reason that these banks are doing this is because they know they can. Because they know there's not going to be any backlash. Because they've got these people that we consider leaders in their pockets. And they're not going to bite the hand that feeds them.
And you know, Mr. Barfield, and that's the thing. I've, I've, I've never been afraid to speak up. Never been afraid to say, hey, look at what's going on. And I like that you, you are leading this new campaign on what is a leader, right? And if you're afraid to speak up, or if you just, whatever the reason, if you're not speaking up, you should not be trying to use that title.
Well, you know, uh, Mrs. DeShazer, I have to tell you that I have issued a challenge to the major television media, and I will be talking with the newspaper. Uh, we've got to get beyond this inaccurate, disrespectful idea of labeling everybody that picks up a microphone from the black community as a black community leader.
Correct.
I've been here all my life. I've never seen in the print, nor on television, anybody that was labeled white community leader. I haven't seen it. Only when it comes to black people and brown people. We have the media anointing for us who our leaders are. And they're not leading. And let me tell you why I say that, I'm getting a little bit off track, but I'm gonna say this. If there are leaders, tell me what movement they have led within the last 20 years. Now, most people can't name one, can't name one. Okay?
Okay.
Get away from this bull crap about black community leaders. We have advocates that do most of the work. We have activists that do most of the work. So-called leaders don't show up for anything in our community.
Correct.
Right? So let's get out of, let's get away from that.
Correct.
Alright, now, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get away.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
But I mean, look, we as black people have got to start holding businesses and politicians and everybody else, police, accountable for their actions. And we don't have anybody. And we haven't had anybody elected officials in terms of city council members and county commissioners, and even state legislators that have addressed some of the most important issues of our time, issues that have been with us for the last, well, 400 years almost, okay? And bank redlining is one of them. So we don't hold these people accountable like we should. And we make the mistake of so often times, spending too much time listening to what they say and too little time watching what they do. So I'm hoping that your election, ma'am, will change our direction because we've been fighting the same old issues for the last 50 years.
Right. So can I tell you what, one thing that I plan to do once I win to help with that situation? There's an advisory board that every city council has. My advisory board is gonna look different than any board has ever looked. We're gonna have people on that committee that really are invested in District One. It won't be facade, it won't be because, um, I need to check box. It's gonna be, it's gonna be people on there that really are in tune with what's going on in District One.
Well, let me just tell you. You know, I'm a believer, and you can tell what a person will do by what they have done. And you have shown this community, this whole city, that you're willing to put boots on the ground, okay? Do the hard work
Yes.
in a voluntary manner, and do it with dedication, and do it with commitment, and do it with passion, and do it for no compensation.
Right.
Okay? And that makes, so if you will do it under those conditions, there's no question in my mind what you will do in a paid position where you are authorized to speak for the community, okay?
And I, I am so excited about that, Mr. Barfield. Um, a lot of times, you know, the, the advocates and the activists, we speak up, we speak up. But if we don't have anybody sitting in those seats to back us up, very little gets done.
Well, let's, let's just be honest. They're afraid to, I'm gonna use this quote-unquote, get out of line, okay? They're afraid to get out of line, okay? Because we've even had people that were elected that have been told that don't do anything controversial, or you will be re-elected. Now, they're told by people that have no ability to even vote for them, but they're people that finance their campaigns, okay? And so these people have basically sold out their communities for a few dollars for a campaign contribution. And maybe some of it is even under the table, okay?
Okay.
We don't need any more of that, we should have had enough of that. We've got to learn to trust people, and that's what it's about. Who do you trust? Who can you trust? And that trust has to be commanded by your past actions.
Yes.
And you passed the test, ma'am. You've shown your commitment. You've shown your willingness to be a voice for the voiceless. You've shown the ability to speak out where others refuse to rear their head or their voice. We need people like Lawanda DeShazer occupying that seat in District One, okay?
I'm ready, I'm ready to serve, I'm ready.
Now, let's talk, and we talked about serving, you also were a volunteer for the Women's League of Voters, is that correct?
Correct.
Wichita League of Women Voters.
Correct.
Okay, and what was your position?
So, I was on the chair for their DEI committee. I chaired that committee. And we were charged with, with everything that the league did. They wanted to make sure that they were hitting the components, the diversity components that they might have been missing prior to. And so we had speakers, we, and again, whatever issue we had on the table, we wanted to make sure that we were addressing the underserved, the overlooked.
Okay, now, you, further on on your volunteer commitments, you served, uh, for seven years counting on the Wichita City Council District One DA board, is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, I was appointed by the current councilman, and I've been serving as long as he's been serving. And so being on the DA board was a commitment, the first Monday of every month, in a meeting that could last from an hour to, there were times we were there to midnight, depending on the zoning cases that we were listening to. So even sitting on that board, again, for seven and a half years, I've gotten an inside view of city council. You know, I, I understand, or I've got to know the city manager, the assistant manager, code enforcement, um, MAPCD, all the different components of the city. I've had, I've gotten my feet wet already.
Great. Now, let's move on. You served on the church committee of your church, and you were involved in feeding the hungry, not only in District One, but across the city, is that correct?
That is correct.
You served and distributed how many pounds of food during the COVID?
One million pounds of food.
Okay.
We faithfully, from December to May, every Saturday, disseminated 1,500 boxes of food. So how do we do that? We got partners from all over the city to come to our church, pick up what they needed for their community, and take it back to their communities. Um, so every Saturday, what, six months, we were doing that. It was my responsibility to find these organizations, to reach out to the organizations, and connect the food to the people in Wichita.
Were you paid any money for doing that?
Zero. I'm gonna tell you how I got paid though. I gave a speech one time. When I know that people are able to eat, when I know that people find the resources that they need, that is how I get paid, Mr. Barfield, that's how I was getting paid, yes.
Alright, that, that's called giving back.
Yes.
That's not talking about it, that's doing the damn things. Excuse me. Okay?
Yes.
And you have a history of doing that, okay? You're the only one. Your history of community service in District One and in the city of Wichita is unmatched by any of the candidates that are on the ballot today. And unmatched by any candidate that's ever run for District One, okay? I'm gonna keep saying that, I'm gonna keep saying that, I want that to sink into people's mind. Here's a woman who backs up her talk with action. She's just not all talking. And there's too much talk going on. As I always say, when all is said and done, more is always said than is ever done, okay? So these people, they can talk a good game, okay? And they can tell you what they're going to do, but can't tell you or haven't told you what they have done. And in particular for District One, okay? Now, so there's only one candidate for you to vote for that you can trust in this upcoming election. So vote on August the 5th for Lawanda DeShazer. Now, let's talk a little bit, Lawanda, about what do you see as, let's talk about the top three issues that you want to address when you are elected.
Okay, we, we gotta look at economics, Mr. Barfield. We gotta look at the lack of economic endeavors in District One, and especially in the historically black district. We know downtown has been taken care of, but historically, black district has, has been overlooked. Uh, but not just that, we gotta look at these sweetheart deals. No more sweetheart deals, we gotta shift our focus to the underdeveloped areas. Um, and I, I did some math, you know, I was looking at numbers. All the tax bases that we gave away, District One could look totally different. We could have grocery stores for the funds we've never received, you know? We could have, and I use the example, we had a, Cessna had a work facility where you got trained for a job with livable wages. We could do that again in District One. Um, we could do, en- enhance our training modules for our young people. So when they get out of high school, again, we're talking about livable wages. You remember the days you could graduate from high school and get a job and take care of yourself and possibly your family? Those things are happening again at Wichita Technical School, but we haven't been pushing that. You know, our kids could graduate and have a job paying $25 an hour. Uh, studies show you need to make $22.50 an hour in Wichita to, to get a decent place to live. And so we start pushing those type of things. We're building up a new generation that's ready to go. So we gotta focus on economics. We got.
I'm, I'm waiting to hear you say that, and, and I want to touch on this. You know, over the years, you know, I remember one candidate slash council member talked about a drugstore that was gonna come into District One at the corner, northeast corner of Oliver and 21st Street. Now, that was some years ago. Did it ever happen? No. Another candidate slash council member talked about a grocery store. Okay? Did that ever happen? Okay? Now, and you mentioned the, 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 uh, Kenmore Plaza thing. You know, that was made possible by two African-Americans who were sitting on the bench at Wichita City Hall when that was passed. And it was passed on a scam, a sham, okay? Now, how do I know that? I know that because I ran for city council during that very same year. And people were kind of outraged when I said I was not going to support that because I saw the scam for what it was.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay.
I knew who was behind that.
Mm-hmm.
It was built, it was generated by the false term that it was gonna be minority owned. That was a lie from the beginning. And I'm sure that most people at City Hall knew that. Listen, there were about nine black-owned businesses in that Kenmore Shopping Center. When that was voted on. Within ninety days, almost every single one of them had been run out of Kenmore Shopping Center. Every single one of them.
I remember.
So we are not holding people accountable. You see, some of us have short memories. Some of us don't want to memorize. I'm telling you, it's time for us to wake up. And realize who's talking and who's acting. And we've had enough talking. It's now time for action.
And you know, Mr. Barfield, that would have been an amazing plan, right? If they dotted I's and crossed T's. It wasn't a real plan without a dotted I and a crossed T.
They didn't, that, they took the word. Because the real owners, as you now know because of the lawsuit. Were big-time developers. And that's the problem we've had for the last forty years in the city of Wichita is catering to big-time wealthy. Millionaires and billionaires, developers. So I was so glad to hear you on yesterday. It's a conclusion in your closing remarks. Well, no, I think you said, said it earlier. But you will not accept any financial campaign donations from special interest groups. From rich, wealthy developers and people that wanna control you. And that's what they've been doing. So I'm so glad to hear you say that, ma'am. So, you know, when we talk about economic development, we wanna talk about what they talk about in other areas. We wanna talk about some businesses that is gonna hire some people and put some people to work and pay them a working livable wage.
Exactly, exactly. And you know, the city has some small business grants and things like that. But again, if people don't know about it, Mr. Barfield, it doesn't do them any good. It, you know, it's earmarked for minority businesses and, and I'm, I'm assuming minority means African-American.
Let's stop with the BS. You have to, listen, if you want to have justice. For black contractors, black businesses, you have to specify African-American. Minority crap, and, no, that's women, that's uh, uh, brown people, that's Asian people. That's, we're all considered minority. Uh-uh. We have to specify like everybody else does.
Right, and we saw with D E I who it really benefited anyway. So, right, we gotta get specific. And why not? If, if, if in the back of our minds, if minority means black, or it used to be, or D E I means black, then let's call it what it is. If we're gonna set aside funds for black people, then let's just say that's what it is.
Well, let me just say one thing, I get it, but when we talk about opportunity zones. And people were lining up to go down there to that water meetings for opportunity zones. Because they were told that all this money was available for black people. All these opportunities were available for black people. How many black people got any money from opportunity zone in the city of Wichita?
Right, we actually ended up calling them the no-opportunity zones in the city of Wichita. And if you read the fine, fine print, which we didn't know at the beginning, you had to use capital gains. Towards the opportunity zones, which means you already are in big business. And you got this excess you need to do something with so you don't pay taxes. We didn't qualify.
Well, hey, I mean, you know, th- this was nothing more than just a cosmetic. Uh, fracade, okay? And, and an illusion that there was something in it for black people, right? Even uh, a, a, a senator from New Jersey. Uh, Booker came out and stated. That this opportunity zone was nothing more than talk as far as black folks were concerned. Okay, so we have to call it for what it is. Now, I'm saying things that some people not gonna like. But I'm saying things that a lot of people do not even understand. They don't understand talk from action. And, and I, well, I won't say that anyhow. But anyhow, uh, listen. You gave your number one economics. What's number two and number three?
And then, you know, everybody's always talking about safe communities. And I've said it before, safe looks so much different in different areas of District One. We've got some, we've got some areas in District One that probably never have a police call in their communities, right? But then we also have districts that have been said are over-policed. And which, which led to distrust. So we gotta, we gotta find a way to have a safe community in historically black areas and make people actually feel safe. I really would like to see community policing come back in a different form. Uh, empower citizens. We can police ourselves, but if we're gonna have officers. We can't have them coming and going and coming and going. We gotta get some stability. If we're gonna have Officer A B C come to District One and he makes the rank of whatever is next. You're gonna still stay in District One because we need to know you, we need to build relationships with you, we need to feel comfortable with you. So I really would like to see community policing back in its original form.
Well, I, I, I wanna say this step further. You know, you're never gonna have trust between a African-American community and police officers. When they don't know. Any police officers on a first-name basis or facial. And police officers don't spend any time getting to know the communities they serve. Well, we should be seeing police officers coming to community events, getting to know the people. That's how you build trust.
Without charging fifty dollars an hour.
Absolutely. You come in there because you, listen, let's just be honest. Police officers really need us, okay? Because most of the crimes they solve are solved based on information they get from the communities. But if you don't have that trust, you're not getting any information. Because they don't trust you. Because the only time they see you is when you there, they write them a ticket or put handcuffs on them. That's not the way you build trust.
Exactly. And so, it used to be a time, Mr. Barfield, I had several police officers na- uh, names and numbers in my phone. That number has dwindled because we don't have consistency anymore.
Well, you know, i- i- it's, 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 it's all starts at the top.
It does.
And I can tell you, I remember the time when we had a police chief. Who came here from Kansas City, formerly been a member of the FBI. And he came to Wichita and we were a troubled city at that time. But he came to Wichita with a different attitude. It wasn't lock them all up. It was get to know them. And he did something different. He was thinking out of the box. And what he did, was he came out and got to know people in the community. He got to know basically who the troublemakers were. And you know what he did? He converted the troublemakers, okay? And brought them into the organization. And gave them an assignment, okay? Because why? The troublemakers knew each other. They knew who was causing the problems. So if you get them to work with you instead of against you, you can solve a lot of crime. You solve a lot of mischief. But you see, right now, we've got an attitude of lock them up, lock them up, handcuff them, and ask questions later. Then we got ministers that believe every damn thing the police chief says. Without any questioning, without any investigation, anything. Now, I'm gonna say this, I'm not in a position to say that the young man that was killed was not. A victim of suicide by police. I've seen several cases of that. But I'll tell you one thing, I never, ever seen somebody that wanted to commit suicide by police take an accomplice on with him. I've never seen that. So we need to hear from his accomplice, what really was on his mind.
What's going on, yes, yes. And right, so we, we gotta find a way to get trust back. And again, and when we bring in, cause I, I like the concept of bringing in the ones that may be seen as the troublemakers. But we gotta help, hold everybody accountable. So we bring them in to help us change. We gotta make sure that who we're bringing in is held accountable as well.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. Now, you know, and I wanna tell you one other thing about this safety stuff. You know, you were called out here by a surrogate uh here within the last ten days. Who said you were the only candidate had not endorsed the uh violence.
Cure the vi- I'm gonna say it for them, cure the violence.
Now, let me tell you one thing. You know, it's very interesting. That the surrogate would call you out. But yet he did not call out the mayor Lily Wu, who not only did not support nor endorse. Community, those, those cure the violence. She insulted the hell out of him. She asked him, are you collaborating with the Wichita Ministerial League? How about the Catholic some whatever? No other candidate for money to stand before the mayor and city council in the city of Wichita. As long as I've been here, has ever been asked that question. Have you ever heard them ask a developer, are you collaborating with uh an architect? Collaborating with a bank? Hell no. What do you want? How much do you want? Okay, cause we have money available for you. But when an African-American group goes down there. And the mayor who's run her campaign on public safety. And yet gun violence is out of control. And you have a group that's wanting to uh intervene. She asked some stupid-ass questions.
Right.
What the hell does a ministerial league have to do with gun violence?
Right, and, and that gets back to, to the mentality, Mr. Barfield. We gotta grow up in Wichita. We, we look at, we wanna point fingers at things that don't even matter, that are almost ridiculous. Instead of getting to the meat of, of what's going on here. You know, at that point in time, the mayor was in charge. And she, like you said, tried to humiliate you all, like they didn't know what they were doing.
Yeah, yeah. And, and then you wanna talk about bringing somebody else in. They see the violence, they live with the violence just like this group does. What are they doing about it? Do they have any answers? Do they have any solutions? So why the hell would you ask her that question? That's an insult.
It was an insult. Right, but they wanna point fingers at me. But it goes back again to Mr. Barfield, what I was saying and they took it out of context. We're saying no one group can do it all. But, but we gotta have groups willing to do the work.
Yes. Do the work and hit the ground instead of running your mouth. That's the difference. We've gotta see change. And you don't make things change by running your mouth. You make things change by taking action, by addressing problems, okay? Coming up with solutions. You know what? I wanna tell you one thing. I interviewed here just a couple of months ago, a woman who's running for mayor of Kansas City, Kansas. And she said something that really struck me, when we talked about economic development in Kansas City. And other things, and asking for money. She said, listen. Here's what you have to do. You have to have a plan. You just don't ask for money with no plan. It's just like you don't go to the bank asking for a business loan with no business plan.
Correct.
People that wanna be leaders don't have a plan.
Correct, correct, correct. Right, and then too, Mr. Barfield, we've had some, some plans. That actually were legitimate plans, but downtown wouldn't even give it the thought of day.
Well, you see, that's where your support mechanism comes in, okay? Too many times, I've seen issues that are very important come before the city council. And nobody's there. Take the D E I, well, that was taken off the table, here just what, three weeks ago, whatever. How many African-Americans showed up to speak against that?
But you know what? Nobody really waved the flag and said, this is coming down the pipe.
Well, okay, so here's the deal. So somebody should have been there and say, hey, look. Put this on hold until the public has had an opportunity to weigh in on this. Basically, what you're saying is, when the city manager was asked, has there been any complaints? He said, one, one. And we're talking about millions of dollars and you're gonna make a decision based on one complaint? There's not been a single decision before the council in almost history where there hasn't been one objector. Based on one person. Unless, unless that person is controlling you.
Right, right.
Say amen, church.
Right, right. Somebody dropped the ball or didn't drop the ball. And, and you know, there's so many things, but I have to talk about our youth. I have to talk about how do we, again, make a way for the next generation? And that's what, that's what I've been fighting for, for a really long time. We, we talked about, you know, jobs and, and those type of things, but right now. Our recreation centers have become moneymakers. Kids can't even just go to the local rec and just have fun. You have to sign up for a class. You can't just go and be a kid anymore. We got, we can do better. Um, there's been models, I mean, we used to do it our own stuff. We, we could be our own model, Mr. Barfield. But there's models in Baltimore and other cities that recognize you've gotta give kids something positive to do. If you're really trying to look at, at, at juvenile uh criminality. If you don't give the kids something positive, what else are they gonna do by getting in trouble? So our rec center's gotta get away from moneymakers, right?
Well, first of all, when you talk about money, we, we, look, you know, here's the problem we have. Is we have too many people that wanna occupy the seat, that don't want to represent, okay? They want to represent themselves and they want to. Somebody to breeze their palm, okay? And basically what happens is, you vote them in. And once you vote them in, they turn their backs on you and go where the money is. Okay, they don't speak up for your best interest anymore, okay? They're worried about satisfying the whims of my campaign donors and financiers, okay? And winning reelection, and how do I do that? Not by representing my district and my community, but by turning my back on them.
Right, and if you go look over at Evergreen, the uh Latino community, their rec center. There's no doubt about who that rec center is for. There's no doubt about it. And it has activities all day, every single day. Why is that not happening in the historically black community? And I, I get it, you gotta make money, I get it. But this is a service and it should be open and available to our young people. So, you know, that's on the top of my list.
Now, I wanna say one other thing here, Lawanda, uh, uh, this disturbs me and I saw this yesterday. You know, I don't know what it is about black politicians. And black communities too. But profit seems to be a dirty word. We hear all about nonprofits, nonprofit this, nonprofit that. Now, what does that mean? That means that nonprofits don't have the resources without counting on corporate America. And when you are getting your palm raised by corporate America. We've seen it too many times. They are buying your silence. And you are enabling them, enabling them to do whatever the hell they want to do. Whether you're not black or not, because those elected officials and those people that run these nonprofit organizations. Depend on them and count on them for their resources to keep operating. So we gotta start putting more focus on for-profit businesses, okay? That are independent, that are not counting on or relying on. Some wealthy developer or bank or whatever. Squeeze my palm.
Right, shut me up. Philosophy, philosophy that, this is what. this is what I believe in. If you want my money, you gotta believe what I believe in. We've seen it too many times. We've seen it. And so, um, I don't plan to get caught up in that trap.
I'm gonna tell you, if you do, I'll be the very first one you hear from and the loudest one.
I know, I know. And I would expect nothing less from you or anybody else in the community. And like I've been saying all along, I'm not building my resume. I'm trying to build a community. I'm trying to help build up our city. And, and it takes doing the right things to make that happen. And like I said, I have zero problems being the the lone voice saying, no, 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 no. I have zero problems being that voice. Or the voice that says, yes, 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 yes. Zero problems being that voice. I've done it. Remember the big, the big polls that invaded the historically black community from Evergy? And we went through a, a period of outrage to silence. And I was like, why are we so quiet on this? Because they, they wiggled a million dollars in front of us. Not everybody got quiet. Uh, Gail Finney was, she was a, a, another leader that, that was a great mentor towards me. Gail never let up, but it got real quiet when that million dollars, we're gonna give, we made a mistake, we're gonna give you a million dollars. And I was like, no, there was actually a movement that said, don't take the money. Don't take the money.
Well, you, you, you see, here's the whole thing about that. See, the group of people was handpicked by Evergy. So the people they picked didn't have the business experience nor knowledge to know. You don't go into a meeting like that with these kind of executives with an ear to listen. You go in with a plan to negotiate. One million dollars for a multi-billion dollar corporation that is doing one billion dollars worth of damage to our community and one million dollars is peas in the pot. But these people didn't know any better.
They didn't. And early on, we were having those community meetings. We were in one meeting and we said, take the polls up. They were like, well, we can't do anything about it. We can't give you anymore. Then we said, take your polls back. And the room got silent. The, the Evergy, they got, they were like, wait, what? It got silent. But the people that were in that room that said, take your polls away, were not on that committee.
Well, let me, let me just show you the difference, okay? Did they, they came here with an intent to put some of those polls in the Riverside area. Did they do it?
Riverside said not today.
Said, hell, no. In our neighborhood.
And they didn't, it didn't happen.
It didn't happen. See, that's the difference between people that have a voice and use their voice and people that don't have a voice and elect people that won't be the voice for them.
That's the difference. That's the, we let, we let people roll over us and we just take the million dollars. We, we, we don't see anything, to be honest, from that million dollars that was sustainable or that we can point to and say, oh, yeah, that was because of we, we, there's nothing, there's nothing to show for it.
Well, you know, the million dollars, none of that million dollars went to the people that were victims of uh, depreciating home values over there in that area. None of that money went to people who had to move out of that area. None of that money went to any of those people. It went to the very people. If that's not a conflict of interest, I'm not black.
Right, and the excuse was, well, everybody black knows everybody black. We all know. Then step, don't get on the board. Don't, if you were gonna apply for the money, say, you know what, I'm gonna recuse myself from this board. It was that simple.
Well, you know, I, I can say a lot of things, but I, I'm gonna.
Okay, we, we'll leave it alone, but yeah.
But anyhow, let me ask you this. Here's what I wanna say to you, uh, Mr. Shazer. What you do before we end this conversation, I want you to issue a request for donations for your campaign, okay? Tell the people where they can contribute to your campaign. And it doesn't make any difference if it's ten dollars, if it's twenty-five dollars, if it's fifty, if you can give it, fine. If it's a hundred, you can give that to even better. But make some kind of contribution to this campaign. It takes money to run a campaign. Okay, so make some, you tell them where they can make donations to your campaign.
Okay, so you can find me at info@dshazer.com, vote dshazer.com. And it'll take you to my webpage. It has everything on there. You can sign up to be a volunteer. There's a link to donate right on the spot. Or if you wanna find me in person, I have an office on East Seventeenth Street, twenty-four ten, East Seventeenth. And I'd be happy to meet you there. And I want you to think of it as an, an investment in our community, an investment in our city, um, an investment to make things better, an investment to have the the, the underserved finally being served, an investment in the overlooked finally being looked at. I want you to make an investment in, in the future of our, our young people. We gotta start somewhere. And so let's make an investment in vote dshazer.com. And like I tell everybody, when I win, we all win because I am not building a resume. I, I could, I could take a jet and fly off to Hawaii and live out the rest of my life. And that's not my calling. It's not what I wanna do. I want to continue to invest in the district that made me who I am and us working together. Cause one person can't do it. And I know everybody doesn't wanna go to City Hall. But we're gonna need you there, but everybody can make a donation. So like I say, anything that you donate will help invest in us.
All right, now folks, vote smart. Vote wise. Vote dshazer, okay? Now, speaking of money, before I let you go, I have to make a little money for the channel, so bear with me one minute.
All right.
Okay, folks. Okay, this is the sponsor for Your Urban Connection. And it is BBQ Barbecue Express located at sixty-two forty-nine East Twenty-first Street. Okay, this is the only sit-down barbecue restaurant in our district, I believe. And they serve barbecue in all varieties. They serve catfish dinners, they serve uh, turkey legs. And they're now willing and ready to cater your next event. Okay, so they now are in the catering business as well. Remember, that's sixty-two forty-nine East Twenty-first BBQ Express. Now, you have just three days left that you can get a free twenty ounce drink with any purchase. But you must men- mention that you heard it here on Your Urban Connection, The Barfield Show, okay? Sixty-two forty-nine East Twenty-first, open Monday through Thursday from eleven to seven. Friday and Saturday, eleven to eight. And now open on Sundays from eleven to five, okay? Tell them you heard it right here. Okay, now, LaWanda, I wanna tell you that it's been an absolute pleasure of mine to have you here, ma'am. And uh, I've appreciated it. And I want you to come back uh, after you've won. And let's make this a regular thing, ma'am. Uh, you know, I want you to be a, a person that has an open communications line with the District One residents, okay? I wanna hear your voice and I wanna see your movement and your actions, ma'am, okay?
Let's make it a deal.
You heard it, you heard it here, okay? Hold on to it, okay? Thanks for watching, folks, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
My pleasure.